I'll call to order the Murray City Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, September 4th, 2025. It's 6:30 PM. Present this evening are Commissioners Ned Hacker, Pete Hristo, Jake Pearson, Aaron Hildreth, Katie Rogers, Peter Kling, and myself, Michael Richards. From staff, we have Zach Smallwood, David Rogers, and Mark Richardson. As a reminder, if you have a cellphone, please silence it. This meeting is being recorded for public record. Appreciate you being here tonight. We're grateful that you can come and participate. Just a couple of etiquette items to review. When the time comes to make a comment on an agenda item, we ask that you speak into the microphone for the recording. We also ask that you state your name and your address for the minutes. And limit your time to three minutes. I probably won't have to do this tonight, but I'll usually set a timer and in three minutes, I'll give you a bit of a grace period and then ask you to be done. Once the item you're here for is over, you're welcome to leave. We just ask that you do so quietly so we can continue with our remaining items. Is that rain? Oh, no. Somebody just rolling a car. If you're viewing this meeting online on the livestream, the only way to make a public comment is to email theplanningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Unfortunately, if you post a comment on Facebook or YouTube, it will not be seen. So let's jump into the agenda. We have seven agenda items tonight. The first three will go pretty quick. The first one is the approval of the minutes for the Planning Commission meeting held on Thursday, August 7th, 2025. Have all the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any changes that need to be made?
No.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
Chair, motion to approve the minutes from August 7th, 2025.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers to approve the August 7th minutes as written. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Hildreth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes have been approved. Agenda item number two, are there any conflicts of interest tonight?
No.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, approval of findings of fact. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the findings of fact?
Yes.
Are there any changes or corrections?
No.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
Chair, I make a motion to approve the findings of fact.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Kling to approve the findings of fact for Murray Block 1 Design Review. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Hristo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Findings of fact have been approved. All right, agenda item number four and five will be done together. David Rogers is going to present. Is the applicant here?
Which is the item?
Agenda items number four and five, the Vine Street lofts?
Yes.
You're the applicant? Awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. So this is an application for design review and subdivision approval for a mixed-use project located on Vine Street in our Murray Center mixed-use zone. So you can see here, it's just under a quarter acre of a site. The plan is for a 5,000-square-foot building, 682 square feet of commercial, and four residential units. This zone is the MCMU Zone, which is one of our mixed-use zones here in Murray City, and it is the MCMU West Subdistrict because it is west of I-15. And you can see there's some general office and some residential further to the west. So this is the site plan here. The idea is for four units, all four of which will have residential, with one of the units having a commercial component on the south side that faces Vine Street. This is the preliminary plat. So as you can see, there's the four units. The intention is for them to be condominiumized, so all of the four units, all for sale individually, along with the dedicated space for the drive aisle and the open space. So these are the building elevations here. They will be three stories in height, 35 feet, which meets the requirement of our MCMU Zone. And you can see all four building elevations there. So the building materials include... Sorry, let me just turn to that really quick. So the materials include cement board siding, brick, and stucco with several accents. And because this is a design review application, the Planning Commission has discretion to determine whether they feel the materials meet the intent of the ordinance. But yeah, I'll go through these a little bit slower. So these are the different elevations and renderings that have been provided for this application. So the first part that I wanted to touch on tonight is the parking. So in the MCMU West Parking Subdistrict, we have required parking for different bedroom amounts, and then the commercial. So as you can see, based on the total number of units and the total number of commercial, the applicant is required to provide 12 parking stalls. And the applicant has provided 16 parking stalls. And staff does want to bring up a concern that we have with the parking. A mixed-use project like this needs to meet the requirements for both commercial and residential parking requirements, which means that tandem parking is only permitted for residential. And so as you can see there, the side-by-side parking has been provided for the commercial, but staff has concerns with them being located within a garage and anyone who visits the commercial needing to walk out of the garage around the building in order to access that commercial. So for site access, there's a 12-foot drive aisle that serves as vehicular access to the site, and staff finds that this is adequate for vehicular access. There is a seven-foot sidewalk, there's a proposed seven-foot sidewalk on Vine Streets that meets the code requirements. But there's no pedestrian access to several of the units without walking directly on the drive aisle. Our condominium code specifically requires an internal circulation system that shall be provided for paved pedestrian paths that are physically separated from vehicular traffic to serve residential, non-residential, and recreational facilities in the development. And this has not been provided on this site. There is a five-foot path on the east end of the property along I-15 that is used to access the amenities and open space on the north of the property. However, the requirements in this zone are seven feet for a sidewalk, and this is smaller than that. And due to this path being right adjacent to I-15, even though it is elevated higher, staff feels that it does not provide a good pedestrian circulation experience for those that are going back to access the open space. One of the units, the unit on the very north end, does have a door that leads directly out to the open space and can be accessed that way. But the other three units will need to walk onto the drive aisle, down to Vine Streets, and along that five-foot path in order to access the open space. And so we don't feel like this meets the intent of the code for that pedestrian access. So these are the floor plans. The first plan is primarily where there will be parking along with that commercial component. And then the upstairs units will have different bedrooms. Most of them are two bedrooms with one of them being a one-bedroom. And so you can see the floor plans there. So for the landscaping and amenities plan, you can see we've included a chart or a map that the applicant has provided that shows off the amenities. And we'll be zooming into different portions of that as we go through the presentation. I also included the landscaping requirement. So the site is required to have... Normally, it would be 15%, but the applicant has indicated a desire to reduce the amount of commercial that is required. And so that would mean that 20% of the landscape of the site needs to be landscaped. And so the applicant has only provided 15% of the site to be landscaped. And that is along with the required landscaping being different levels of trees and shrubs, where the applicant does not have the required amount of shrubs that are needed for our ordinance as well. So specifically, here is the landscaping amenities. The landscaping in the front is eight feet, which is required by the MCMU code, and that does meet the ordinance. So you can see there's the landscaping there. And then you can see a little bit of that path on the east side of the building that leads to the rest of the open space on the rear. So here are the landscaping and amenities. This is the open space. You walk on that five-foot path to get to the rear of the building in order to access this open space. Unit 1 does have that door, as was called out earlier. And so the amenities include a picnic table and a hanging park bench that can be used by the residents of this development. But staff wants to... Yeah, staff wants to emphasize that we feel that based on the amount of open space provided and the amenities provided, that the applicant has not added the required amenities and open space to follow the reduced commercial that they are proposing. And so we do not feel like this meets our ordinance requirements. So, public notice. 52 notices were mailed to property owners within a 450-foot radius and to affected entities, which because of the subdivision, we notice affected entities, which include different utilities in other cities, things like that. And as of the date of this presentation, no comments have been received. So based on our analysis as staff, as we were writing our staff report, we have found that the proposed mixed-use development is not consistent with the requirements of the Murray City Code, Section 17.146, which is the Murray Central Mixed Use Zone for reasons we have discussed. The applicant is currently not providing the required amount of commercial space based on the amenities for that reduction. The applicant is not providing the required amount of landscaping, and the proposed amenities do not meet the intent of the Open Space and Amenity Code. The proposed development does not comply with the requirements of the Murray Central Mixed Use Zone and other applicable standards of the Land Use Ordinance regarding circulation and other things like that. And the proposed subdivision does not meet all the development standards for condominiums as outlined in Section 17.62.040. And so based on our analysis as staff, as we've reviewed this project, as we've looked at the different code requirements that are needed for this particular code, staff recommends the Planning Commission vote to deny design review and subdivision approvals for the loss on Vine Development on the property located at 368 West Vine Street. However, as the Planning Commission, you have discretion to make whatever motion... To make several different motions. So this is only one of multiple options that the Planning Commission has in making a decision. Some different options include approval with conditions. The Planning Commission may vote to approve both design review and subdivision requests by drafting conditions that you feel would bring the project into compliance with the ordinances. And staff felt that the amount of changes that were needed could not be adequately met with conditions. But the Planning Commission has the discretion to do that if they so wish. And you can also continue to a later meeting. The Planning Commission may vote to continue the item, to have it be heard at a later date, and to come back to you at another time. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, David. Any questions from the Commissioners?
I just had two questions.
Yes.
The pathway on the east side is too narrow, is that correct?
So it is five feet, and the standard requirement for a sidewalk in that zone is seven feet.
Okay. And there is no exit for the three first units to the east?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I thought, I just wanted to verify. Thank you.
And that sidewalk that the Commissioner just raised is along the I-15, elevated along the I-15?
That is correct.
Okay, if there aren't any additional questions, we'll have the applicants please come to the podium. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening, Adam Maher, 3137 South Main Street. I'm the applicant, owner, and developer of the proposed project. We think it's a rather clever solution for a somewhat difficult piece of land, given where it's at and the history of that rental. So what we're attempting to do is create something that works in that challenging spot with the noise, with the height, and whatnot. Contrary to what staff said, we feel that most of those objections are very easy to overcome. When we received the 33-page report a couple of days ago and found out that we were missing two five-gallon shrubs, that's... We added two five-gallon shrubs, and that's hard to do. Likewise, the end unit has a door. The front unit has a door. So the two middle units, the fact that they don't have a door going out to the sidewalk or going onto just the walking path. As soon as we got the report, we added doors to that, too. So there's a mandor east, a mandor west, and the roll-up door. And then someone doesn't have to go walk around the building. I think we all know how often a lot of the outdoor amenities get used with this type of a location. It's very loud. The freeway noise is deafening almost at that point. So we thought that was very easy to solve. The walkway at five feet that's going to be paveders and lighted and have landscaping and have trellises, even at that, I just don't see people going back there a whole lot. But we simply added two more doors to the two that were already there. And I think that that assuages that concern. So I think one of the other comments that said we didn't meet the code because there was too much uninterrupted facade. We read the note, added one window, and then it brought it into compliance. But this was all after we had gotten the report. So most of those concerns seemed fairly easy for us to address. But I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have based on staff's presentation or the notes, or even the use.
Yes, so thank you. So it sounds like you're able to address some of the problems, but some of them, you're like the five-feet versus seven-feet sidewalk?
You know, a five-foot versus seven-foot for... You know, that would be a city sidewalk that's used to move people through. I fail to see how that would ever be needed in any way, shape, or form to have two more feet on a side yard next to the freeway that's, like I said, deafening. If someone felt incredibly strong about that, okay. But as it is, we've garden, landscaped, paved, lighted, trellises. You know, we've made that as engaging a walkway as is possible. If someone just feels that 24 more inches of landscaping that is not visible from the road, is not going to be enjoyed by the public, is going to be watered, mowed... You see my point? I mean, if that's what this hinges on, okay, so be it. But it seems like a fairly trivial and arbitrary thing to try and interject. For the end unit has its door directly to it on the north. The commercial space has a door right there as well. So you and I are talking about the two doors of the two middle units and how often those are going to be accessed? Public's not going back there. But to your point, sure, it's not that hard.
Yeah, so adding the doors certainly helps some of the concerns. What about the parking?
Well, the parking at... Oh, excuse me, I didn't mean to catch you.
No, no, that... Just in terms of having to... You know, the commercial piece having to be in tandem maybe, or...
We met with staff many, many times since our original application of October of '23, worked out the parking to where it, you know, not only meets but exceeds the city's requirements. So 12 are required. We're providing 16. When they didn't want it tandem, we changed it so it wasn't tandem, so...
So I feel like it is tandem still, did I miss?
Well, if it's side-by-side, tandem would be double-deep. So the fact that the cars are side-by-side, so...
I see, okay.
Right.
I got it, thank you. And then the landscaping, you said it's not hard to add, obviously, a couple shrubs. But does that meet the 20% percentage?
So we were very much under the impression that we had met code even after several meetings with staff. When we got the write-up that said that we weren't at that, that was kind of news to us. We looked at those numbers again. So I understand that the packet that has gone to the Planning Commission due to schedules and whatnot, you know, was due like a couple of weeks ago. When I got that, we made the changes and the same day sent them into staff, but that was too late to update your packet. So we proposed additional amenities, added the shrubs, added the doors, you know, added the windows, the things that, you know, we understand. But a lot of that was news to us when we first got there.
So you can meet the minimum percentage landscaping with the changes?
And, you know, and we could... I believe both you and staff have some latitude with the amenities package. I think as, you know, a building owner and someone who's also built, you know, several multifamily and residential, amenities packages are oftentimes... I mean, they have their place. But again, when we're talking about landscaping the heck out of a patch next to the freeway, this is an unusual spot. So I think there's some unusual things. To say that this building is going to be up against Vine and against the freeway, there's four total residents. How many of them are going to do that? We would ask for some, I guess, just kind of clarity and realism with regards to that amenities package, because that is not visible from the street. It's not accessible to the public. To the degree that staff does or doesn't want this project, I guess, I think that there's a lot to talk about there.
Yeah, no, I see your logic. Questions from other Commissioners?
Was the garbage situation addressed?
Yes, it was as well. Thank you for mentioning that. That hadn't been mentioned in any of the previous reviews. And so we created a space that is shielded, covered, encasing four 64-gallon individual containers that's easily accessible. So... But that was a good example of one that had not come up in any of the prior reviews, and we incorporated that.
Okay, thank you.
So, to be clear, it appears that other than the sidewalk extension, you were able to comply or have complied with everything else that the staff has required?
As long as we can work with staff on what they're calling the amenities package, yes, sir.
I believe there was a question regarding the amount of commercial space, that it was less than...
Well, so you're... Yes, sir. Again, sorry for talking over you. Your code allows for certain reductions in that. And so we have worked with staff in the past to say it was demanding up to, I think, 1,200 square feet of commercial based on the MCMU Zone. So with both parking and amenities, we simply used the lever that your code has to reduce that. We're looking at the commercial space there, and I think that you guys know very well how that's gone along the corridor, you know, between where we're at on Vine to the hospital. And very mixed success with regards to the, you know, retail walk-in type nature of that. So more commercial doesn't seem to be very desirable or beneficial. So we used your code to say, by doing additional amenities, you could go down from 100% of the required commercial down to 60, 75. And, I mean, Zach and David know the code better. But so that's where... The only real discussion that I understand it, you know, it comes down to how they view the amenities and how much Murray City wants amenities that are not visible nor accessible versus this commercial level. So we have used your code to request a reduction by providing amenities.
What would you anticipate? Which commercial would be serving those?
You know, I'm willing to bet it's going to be someone much like myself who like owns their own business but like works from home. So I think it's someone that's going to say, hey, I really like the idea that this is centrally located, has great views, that I could put my couple of cars there, you know, maybe my boat or something like that, and those big oversized garages, and that that's my home office. Or, you know, maybe it's an architect. Maybe it's an engineer. Maybe it's someone who just has that maybe occasional client. But I don't see it in any way, shape, or form as being a business retail, you know, dare we say. And I think most multifamily, we would all agree, nowadays, when you walk in in a lot of condos or row homes, you have the garage and that home office. You know, that small... That tends to be the floor plan that we're seeing with the vertical type arrangement. So the fact that your MCMU Zone kind of asks for that seems very doable. But it's by no means going to be a retail, you know, type spot. So, you know, we would ask that before you, you know, make your decision on final approval, that, you know, if you grant staff the latitude to work with us just on the amenity, but landscaping was easy, trash just hadn't come up before, okay. Likewise, the comment that, you know, we had too much flat space on the facade. It was the addition of one 5x3 window. You know, these were not hard things. So as soon as they were brought to our attention, we made the change, put down a PDF, sent it off to staff. But that was after your packages has gone out.
Got it.
So are you... Sorry.
No, go ahead.
So the reduction of required commercial space, do you think that you're complying with the 60% of required space?
David, come back up here if you wanted. You know, we had worked through with staff this a couple of turns back where we just weren't understanding it on the first go-around. But my understanding is that and that the amount of commercial space was no longer the real question, right? Because the first time we turned it in, we had the number wrong. And then you guys corrected us, and that's when the parking went from double-deep to...
Okay.
Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we see eye to eye on the amount of commercial space.
Yeah, we can have staff come back up a little bit, and we can clarify that. And then part of that was the amenities, which you've mentioned, which I understand your argument there. But there's also a 10% increase in total open space, which I think you're already short on.
We were at... Yeah, we were showing 17. And then with this last review, there's something that we need to be at 20. So again, the amount that we're off was something that I think that we could work with, especially if staff is looking at the amenities we've proposed and what we can do. I think the intent is clear, and I think this body with this development understands there's not a lot of benefit that the public's driving here, either aesthetically nor even operationally. So I'm just hoping that we could work with staff on how the amenities are interpreted.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
With the commercial parking, it is in a garage, correct? How will people using it... I know you said you don't think it's going to be retail. But even if there's clients of an architect coming in, how will they be able to access that on...
Just like any commercial garage, they'd leave the door open.
They just leave it open?
Leave the roll-up door open, just like in a parking garage.
Would that give them access to the condo above?
So the... If you put up the elevation again, this... If that's possible, it'd be very easy to talk you through that. So right now, what we have is, on the west, we have the roll-up door for the garage and a mandor. That mandor goes into a corridor dedicated to the stairs so that the individual owner could relegate that flow exactly that way. So somebody could go into that door and into the commercial space, or into that door and into the garage space, or if their key didn't work, just to the upstairs.
Okay.
But that seems like a very easy flow thing to relegate based on the owner of the unit.
Okay.
Anything else you'd like to add? We're going to have David come back up in a second, but we're also going to have a public comment. Anything else you want to add?
comment, but anything else you want to add?
Only if you have a question for me.
Okay. I don't think we have any other questions right now, so you have a seat. Thank you. Okay, so I'll open the meeting up to a public comment now. If you'd like to make a public comment, please come to the podium at this time. Okay, seeing no public comment, I will close the public comment period. Any additional discussion amongst commissioners? I think there probably is, and it'd probably be helpful if David came back. Yeah, let's get staff back up.
Hi.
David, I have a question regarding, have you been able to verify the statements of the applicant with respect to what's transpired in the last few days or week with dealing with these changes?
The applicant did resubmit, but due to the deadline, as was mentioned, that has not been taken into account for this project. We presented to you what was given to us by the deadline that was state mandated for when we would send that to you. So we have not reviewed the resubmit.
Understood. Thank you.
So just to clarify, you have not had a chance to review the resubmit, so therefore we don't know if he's, what he stated is necessarily important?
Staff has not had an opportunity to go in depth on that, on what was sent back to us.
I have it available if that's helpful.
Okay. I have a question about the reduction in commercial space.
Yes.
Is it your understanding that he needs to get to a 60% of required commercial space based on his current plans?
So the initial discussion with us and the applicant was that he was aiming for the 75% reduction, which at 1,200 would be about 900-ish square feet. Sorry, I'm not a mathematician, a mathematician, but about there. And so we did an analysis that he's currently at 54%. So he would just need to, I'd need to look at the code again to know exactly what he needs to add. I believe it's that 10% reduction, or the 10% addition of the amount of landscaping coverage on top of the amenities to reduce down to the 60%. And then it was the 5% increase in order to reach the 75%.
I see. So just, I'm going to repeat what I think you said.
Yes, no, please, please.
He's currently at 54%.
Of the required commercial based on the MCMU code.
So if he got to the 60% required by adding the 10% increase in total open space with addition of the two amenities he already has, he's still 6% off. Is that correct?
So if he added, so he's currently, so the code, underlying code requests 15% of the site to be landscaped. He has proposed 17% of the site, overall site is landscaped. So in order to get the 75%, 20% of the site would need to be landscaped, which is that 5% increase. And in order to get to the 60%, he would have to do the 25%, or the 20%.
But even if he gets to the 60%, he's still...
Correct. He's still short.
He's still short.
I think I understand what you're asking. So you can see on the screen, Unit 4, commercial space is 682 square feet. That equates to about 54% of the 1,220 or whatever it was. So yeah, I think to get up to the 60%, he would have to be, I don't have a calculator on me, I'm sorry, it's right here, but yeah. So whatever, it would have to increase by that much to get to the 60%. So he's not quite meeting the 60% either. So he has to get up to that 60%. So it would require an increase in commercial space and the increase in the landscaping space.
So to get, so, sorry, I think you may have already answered this, but I'm going to ask the question. The 20% landscaping is to get to 75?
Correct.
And what was the number to get to the 60? In landscaping?
So the default is 15% for the zone. In order to get to the 75%, you have to increase that by 5%. So 20% of the total. And in order to get to the 60, you have to increase the base 15 by 10%. So it'd need to be 25%.
25%. So he's at 17% now, he would need to get to 25% in open space, and then he would have to increase the square footage of the commercial space another 6% to meet the 60%.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm glad you're both there because you can work together on answering this. So, and maybe you can review what the purpose of the Murray Central mixed use is. My understanding is because it's part of that transit corridor, we're pretty particular about what we're trying to get done in this zone. And I think what the applicant is asking us as a commission is to apply discretion with respect to amenities, sidewalk, parking, commercial, and open space that's at some variance with the intent of the Murray Central mixed use. So my question is, it has twofold, is perhaps articulate what the purpose of that zone is? And secondly, if we were to vote approval of this, are we making a number of exceptions with respect to the applicant's desired changes or variance of, when he talks about the amenities, perhaps, I don't, I want to put words, perhaps it's not necessary because of this particular project, and I just wonder if we're setting, we're setting a precedent by using discretion to deny all those conditions.
Sure. So you bring up a good point. So the, as you all are aware, this is an administrative decision. There is very little discretion that is allowed in the code. State law says that you, that the only discretion that you're allowed is that if it says that you have certain discretion in the code. That seems silly, but that's what it is. Those discretionary things are like the reduction in commercial, that's listed in code by, you can reduce it by this much if you do these things, you can reduce it by this much if you do this thing, these things. We, the commission by state law is not allowed to just willy-nilly say you can't, we'll go ahead and just waive a requirement. That's not the role of an administrative decision. It's, does it meet? Yes. Does it not meet? No. And that's just like how we treat every other conditional use permit or site plan review, anything like that that comes before you. So yes, you would be getting the city in potential problem areas if somebody were to say, well, wait a minute, that's not fair. You gave discretion on something that you couldn't, the city could end up becoming sued and legally, legal stuff could happen.
If we were to do that, even if, aside from the legal implications, if we did it, for one, others could come in that same zone and ask for exceptions to what we've tried to codify.
And ask, yeah, definitely.
So, sorry, timeline-wise here, from what I understand, the applicant requested this to be on the agenda, right?
Correct.
But before the conditions were met. Am I understanding, I'm just wondering why we're getting this on before you were submitting those fixes to address the concerns?
So we had worked through a number of resubmits with the applicant, and we were asked numerous times, when can I be placed on a planning commission? And we continued to say, when these things are addressed, and working through these issues. Also, when we are meeting with somebody, we're also very careful to say this, especially when we're just looking at it with somebody, right? Like, this is not a full detailed review of the code until we're ready to work through a staff report. We try our hardest, but it doesn't get through every single detail until we're locked in our offices during planning commission packet weeks, and we're going through every line of the code. The Murray Central mixed use isn't also a very complicated code. It has been nicked and dinged. It's been, kind of like I mentioned in the Form-based code, it's had a lot of death by a thousand cuts. And it's, it's kind of shredded, shredded, and it's hard to interpret where things are located sometimes, what looks like it's familiar is not, or what you read is great, and then you'll find that something is conflicting down below, and we have to take both of those things into account when we review. Sorry. So getting back to your question, is that during those reviews, we would get back with him, and then we would, eventually it got to the point where he was asking to get on the planning commission, and we did advise that we can put you on a planning commission because it seemed like nothing was really substantially moving, but we wouldn't be recommending approval at that point.
Was that before or after those submitted changes?
The second, those additional changes came after the packet was sent out.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I ask a question about the sidewalk? So the staff had concerns with the fact that the sidewalk next to I-15 is five feet instead of seven feet. Is that a requirement, or is that something that we have discretion on?
Requirement.
Okay.
Do we know who owns that fence? I think it's just a little chain link fence right now.
It is a chain link fence, yeah.
Okay. Is that owned by UDOT or the property?
I would assume, it's probably shared between UDOT and the property owner.
Okay.
So is it even possible with the footprint that he has, to make this thing go through and we say, no, you got to have seven feet to shift it over, to give seven feet, or is that...
Engineers can do some crazy magic. I'm not 100% sure.
Okay. I thought you were going to pull out your calculator.
I know, I'm sorry.
Okay, anything else, any other discussion?
I've got a quick question. Are we allowed to, I don't know if allowed is the right word, can we consider these changes that we haven't seen as part of this, or...
I wouldn't, no.
Right, because I haven't seen...
The reason being is that staff has not vetted anything on there yet, so I couldn't, we couldn't speak to anything on that. We would be having the same visceral reaction to any new plans that you would be seeing, and I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair to you as the commission or to the applicant to get a thorough and fair review.
I have some comments, but they're not for staff, so when we're done with staff, I...
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I just, I'm just going to lay out my notes here as I see it. I think, you know, one of the options on our screen is to approve the design review and draft some conditions for the applicant. And I think, you know, I looked through those, and I think like the blank wall, the trash, the shrubs, the commercial parking, even the amenities, I think we could probably either are okay, or we could put some conditions in there. But I think the ones that are difficult are the landscaping going from 17 to 25, the path, the seven-foot path, and having all that so they can get down to a 60% commercial that's only 54, which in my mind would require a redesign of the building somehow. And so I don't think we can condition this in my mind. And so I think, in my mind, I think we have to go with the staff recommendation and vote to deny the design review and subdivision approvals, but that's just my thinking.
I think you're right. I think just the sidewalk piece is hard to overcome. Any differing views?
I'll summarize what I said before when I was questioning staff, is that I think we have to be very careful, we're trying to adhere to the intent of the zoning, the Murray Central mixed use, and that we get into the business of trying to apply discretion or orient conditions that make exceptions to it, then we end up setting precedent for future projects. And, you know, I'd rather not get into that business.
I agree, and I think it makes sense to follow what the staff has recommended. I mean, as much as we're all sitting here, we're seeing the logic that you're presenting, and it makes a lot of sense. It's a very unique space, but I think, yeah.
I think it sounds like it just needs a little more time to bake. If you submitted those changes, maybe we just need time to review them. I don't know if, I'm speaking out of turn, is maybe delaying the issue for a few months give you enough time to really review those? I don't know if that makes things harder or easier, or if I'm just completely off the planet right now.
No, if we deny this, then it, you know, he has time to resubmit. You ready to make a motion?
Yeah, Chair, I'll make a motion that the planning commission vote to deny the design review and subdivision approvals for the lofts on Vine Development on the property located at 368 West Vine Street.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Haristo to deny, did the planning commission vote to deny design review and subdivision approvals for the loss on Vine Development on the property located at 368 West Vine Street? Do we have a second?
Chair, I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I just want to clarify, we're voting yes to deny, correct?
Yes.
We take a vote? Chair Haristo?
Yes.
Chair Kling?
Yes, to deny.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Kling. Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hildreth?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Chair Richards? Yes, and we can all be chairs tonight if that's okay. Thank you. All right, thank you. So I'm sorry that that probably wasn't the outcome that you wanted, but I think it gives you some time to go back and make some of those changes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number six, Block 1 subdivision. Zach is presenting. Applicant is here. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. So I'm going to save you from me reading every single one of these properties that are located, but this is a subdivision amendment for the Block 1 subdivision, amending the current City Hall subdivision. It's located, sorry, I don't have my little laser pointer, located on these properties just east of where we're located currently. It's this parking lot here, this other parking lot here, buildings, a building that is known as the DAR Building or Mercantile Buildings that are owned by Rockworth Companies. They are the co-applicant with Murray City RDA as the co-applicant as well. And then the remaining buildings that are owned by the RDA. It's in the City Center Form-Based Code. You guys recently reviewed a design review application for the project here. This is kind of now consolidating all the properties so that we can then, the RDA can convey those properties over to Rockworth Companies. So I wanted to start, I don't think I included this in your packet, and I apologize if I didn't, but this was considered Lot 2 of the City Hall subdivision. So this is the parking lot where Poplar Street was, the parking lot just east of here. So how we are doing this is expanding, so amending Lot 2 of this subdivision and expanding it to encompass the remainder of the site, so turning it into one very large block. There will be some amendments here to the property that the Townsend House is on, just shrinking that yard area. It's no longer a single-family home, it's not been used as one, but it still has a backyard as though it is still one, and a side yard that is still one. So we are tightening those up so that we can get a better, a better project out of Block 1.
So it'll be tighter than that, or that's what it will be?
That is, this is what it'll be, yeah. I mean, it kind of, it comes off about, I think, 10 feet from the side, and then I think another 10 feet from the rear or something along those lines. What we wanted to do is make sure that as we're developing the historic plaza, that really it focuses inward towards this plaza area and not the, not the remainder of the site. So it's pretty straightforward.
To question, so yeah, just to confirm, T-Rose and the flower shop next to it, Townsend Home are not part of this?
Correct. That's what, that's what this is.
And then the parking that's north of there, how far does that go over towards the City Hall?
The parking to the, to the north of Townsend?
Yeah, north of Townsend, that parking area there, how far does Rockworth's project go again?
It goes all the way.
Oh, I know, but all the way west towards the City Hall parking?
Well, that is no longer City Hall parking. It will not be eventually, yeah. That will be where the apartments are located. So we sent 113 notices to owners within a 500-foot radius of the proposed amendment and to affected entities notifying them of the proposed subdivision amendment. I have not received any comments regarding the subdivision amendment. Here's your findings here, that meets the proposed subdivision code and the City Center Form-Based Code. And we are recommending approval. When you make the motion, you don't have to read all the addresses, I promise it'll be fine. And subject to the four conditions as listed. I'm happy to take any questions.
I don't think we have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Zach. Can the applicant please come to the podium?
I'm part of it.
Oh, sorry.
I know, we can partner this.
Do I have to ask both of you to meet the conditions? Okay. Can you state your name and address?
Yes, Sarah Namelka with Rockworth Companies, and we're 4655 South, 2300 East in Holiday.
Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add to...
Maybe the only other thing is, on the parking, we are relocating city staff parking to an underground parking structure. That's being worked out in a different agreement, but we will be replacing the majority of that parking with a structured, secure parking structure for the city staff.
And we're able to meet the requirements?
Yes.
For the record, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's it. Any discussion amongst the commissioners? Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
You haven't done your public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Totally was ahead of myself. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment?
Susan Wright, 4907 South Poplar Street, the ballet center right over here. I went to many, many meetings, and we had planned a town square that was in front of the mansion and Townsend House. And it looks like a lot of this land is kind of, I'm very happy about this project. It's long overdue. But I just wonder about our town square that we were going to put in front of the mansion and the Townsend House, and we're going to go further north. I wonder what has become of that. We had a big project we went to many meetings for, so maybe you can address that.
Yeah, Zach will address all the public comment questions at the end, so. If that's it, then I'll ask for any other public comment.
Hi, my name's Leanne Parker-Reed at 574 East Bruce Glen Road. I have some similar concerns as Susan does. I actually kind of like the idea of the project so far, but I am concerned about the green space, and I wanted to know... space, and I wanted to know, most of our subdivisions and our projects have a certain requirement for green space, and I just didn't hear specifics this time in the review. So I just wanted to learn a little bit more about that, make sure that that was being met for our city. Thanks.
Any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring it back for any discussion amongst the Commissioners and a couple answers from Zach.
Yeah, I'll address those. So subdivisions are very weird things. They are dealing with, I like to affectionately call imaginary lines placed on, in the world. So they can be really hard to see in these very legal, engineering-heavy maps, I guess you could say. So what we're talking about is everything that's highlighted. Everything that is not highlighted will not be touched, so, and my cursor goes away when I zoom in like this. So the mansion, for example, whoa. The mansion is located here, Townsend House is here, and then T-Rose is located here. So how this does change a little bit, because we are moving some lines around. So you can see here, there's an access that enters in this parking area right now. That, this line right here is being shifted upward. I don't remember exactly how many feet, but it is being shifted upward, I think at least twelve feet or so. So we will be sharing that access with Rockworth, or, sorry, Rockworth will have that access, and we will be utilizing some of it as well. But that, that open space, that plaza stuff is still planned, it's still moving forward, and it's not affecting this at all. We're just tightening up what you can see here, kind of at the top of your, middle of your screen now, there's the Townsend House right smack dab in the center. We're moving that, that line to the north, we're bringing that down past, you can kind of make out a garage in there. This actually might be better if I, whoa, that was intense. Okay, this one's better. So you can see the garage structure right dab, right in the middle there. We're moving the property line just onto the other side of that, just to the south. So it's just tightening up some things, but the plaza is still expected to be constructed. The green space will still be there. We're just moving property lines is all we're doing. It's not gonna affect the rest. In regards to the, the open space, that project, so the actual design review of that project was done at the previous meeting where we discussed kind of the open space. This really is just like, legally is moving property around, so the subdivision requirements do not require open space per se. In certain aspects, when we're doing like planned unit developments or things like that, that are residential, residential subdivisions, yes, those require open space and, and things of that nature in that zone. But this is more of what you would consider a commercial subdivision, so it's just consolidating property.
Zach, the, north of the mansion, when you talked about this blue-green line being moved north a little bit, and you mentioned access, is that a roadway, or is that gonna be lawn or green space?
It's going to be, it's still gonna maintain as that accessway into Rockworth's development off Hightower.
But that doesn't mean, is there additional lawn there?
Not lawn, no. So you can see, you can see right here, so this is pretty much where the old line is, but you can't see it, I'm sorry, I'm doing it with the icon on my computer. So where it says, "Subject to Vacated Alley Recorded March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two", that's about where the access is, so you can kind of see where we're shifting that upward a little bit.
So is the town square, to the public comments, has it been diminished somewhat?
Nope.
Okay, so it's basically the same area that we had considered previously, that we had considered previously?
Correct.
Okay. And then I know it's hard probably to speak to the, the green space question. I know in the last Planning Commission, there was, you know, there was a presentation of the whole project, and there was a whole bunch of green space. I don't know if you can speak to that here?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can address it. There are green spaces throughout the project. Open space, it is a little bit more urban, but it is still open space. There's some plaza space, or some connecting spaces throughout, improved pedestrian experiences along there. Our downtown should be a downtown, so there will be some elements of urbanity to it. And what we also wanted to do when we developed the Form-Based Code is not get small, unusable open space. We wanted to really find meaningful open space, so we allowed developers to maximize their space, and we're, we as the city should be providing open space such as these plazas and things of that nature, so that we are making better open space decisions than requiring somebody to have a small path or anything that's not relevant.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Zach or discussion? Okay, thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no additional discussion, I'll bring it back for a motion.
Chair, I make a motion, Planning Commission approved the Block One subdivision, amending and extending Lot Two of the Murray City Hall subdivision, the properties addressed, et cetera.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Kling to approve, or that the Planning Commission approve the Block One subdivision, amending and extending Lot Two of the Murray City Hall subdivision for the properties addressed, all the ones on the screen. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. That's okay, I have a second from Commissioner Rogers. Any discussion on the motion?
I think, I think maybe we should just clarify that we did not say, "Subject to the conditions one through four", and maybe the, maybe we should.
Okay, I will amend my recommendation to add, "Subject to the four conditions", also on the screen. Is that okay?
I think he, I think.
Oh, I have to say.
Commissioner Kling has to.
Peter has to do it.
He has to amend his motion.
So approval, yes, I'll repeat it, approve the Block One subdivision.
Thank you, Jake.
Amending and extending Lot Two of the Murray City Hall subdivision of the properties addressed, those, subject to the following four conditions. Good?
Yeah, thank you, Jake, and thank you for amending your motion, Commissioner Kling. And do we have a second on the amendment of the motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Rogers. Any additional discussion? Okay, let's take a roll call vote.
Perfect. Commissioner Kling? Yes. Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hildreth?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Horstow?
Yes.
And Chair Richards?
Yes.
Awesome.
Awesome, thank you, motion is passed. All right, and on to our final agenda item tonight, agenda item number seven, Luso Office Services, is the applicant here? Thank you, it looks like David is presenting on this one.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. So this is a request for a zone map amendment for a property located at six, sixty-four forty-six South, nine hundred East. So it is a quarter acre of a site, it is currently located in the R-one-eight zone. As you can see, it is north of Winchester and across the street from Wheeler Farm. So this is the zoning map, it is currently in the R-one-eight zone. To the south of it is some commercial, some multifamily, to the north and west are R-one-eights. Further north is where we've got some R and B that has already been rezoned, and then to the west we have open space for Wheeler Farm. So this is our future land use map. Our general plan has a future land use map that calls for what we want the city to look like going forward, what we believe is a good use of the different land within the city. So our future land use map calls for this parcel to be residential business. Some other land uses include low-density residential or commercial, and so the future land use map does call for this parcel to be rezoned to our, to residential business. So for zoning regulations, this existing in the R-one-eight zone, it is planned to be rezoned to the R and B zone. You can see the height is actually reduced in R and B compared to the R-one-eight zone, but a lot of the other things are fairly similar. The setbacks are slightly smaller in the R and B zone than they are in the R-one-eight zone. The side yard setbacks go from a total of twenty to just eight on both sides, the corner yard setback is still twenty, and the parking is based on use rather than the two per dwelling that the single-family zone has. So the parking would be looked at depending on the use. So for public notice, fifty-eight public notices were sent to all property owners of three hundred feet and to affected entities. As of the date of this presentation, no comments have been received. So the findings, the general plan provides for flexibility in implementation and execution of the goals and policies based on individual circumstances. Amending the zoning map will allow for cohesion as the character of nine hundred East develops into a mix of housing and commercial opportunities. The proposed amendment from R-one-eight to R and B has been considered based on the characteristics of the site and the surrounding area. We've done, there was a zoning letter request for this site that kind of looked into some of its, its background, we found that it was a preschool before, something about this site that's different from others is this site faces onto nine hundred East rather than the residential neighborhood, and so we believe that these characteristics contribute to it being rezoned. The potential impacts of the change can be managed within the uses allowed in the R and B zone, and the proposed zone map amendment from R-one-eight to R and B conforms to important goals and objectives of the twenty-seventeen Murray City General Plan and will allow for an appropriate use of the property. So based on our analysis as we researched this site, staff recommended the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the requested amendment to the zone map designation of the property located at sixty-four forty-six South, nine hundred East to R-one-eight, which is low-density, single-family, to R and B, which is residential neighborhood business as described in the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, David. Thank you, David. Questions for David?
Does the current building on site match the, the requirements there for R and B? Or is that gonna require the building being changed at all?
So that would be looked at depending on the use, that's when we would look at parking and different standards like that.
So future ideas about reconstruction or anything is not on the table here, it's just about the zoning itself?
That is correct. Any changes that would be made to the land or to the buildings on the land would be looked at as individual projects.
All right. We have the applicant please come to the podium? And as a reminder, please state your name and address for the record.
Sixty-four forty-six South, nine hundred East, Lorenzo Denna, I'm here on behalf of Luso Office Services, and Claudia Alvarado, she's owner of the company.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, just good evening, thank you guys for having us. We've been working with David here for a few weeks trying to get this figured out. We provide corporate services for new entities and already existing entities across the state of Utah. Like he mentioned, what we do is somewhat of a low-density, you know, business, not a lot going on as far as traffic goes, but it is in accordance with what you guys were planning originally, so I think that it'd be a great fit for us as well as the city, and we're looking forward to working with you guys.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
Yes, and what's the use of the, what's being used in there now, and then what was the projected use?
Sure, yeah. So as he mentioned originally, it was a preschool for many years, and I think it, at some point it became somewhat of a duplex type of thing that they had going on, but as far as what we're gonna use it for, it's mostly office space, so it's gonna be essentially, we do a lot of clerical stuff for businesses, so it's, it's office space.
I have a question, so to go from a residential to a business space, do you think about access to the property off of nine hundred versus residential street?
Yeah, and so that's one of the things that we obviously have been talking about, and as he mentioned, we have to figure out as far as use goes. There is access already on, on the main street right there as far as parking goes, so it's very accessible. But like he mentioned, it used to be a preschool, and so on the back end of the building, there is what was a playground, right? Just a lot of grass and, you know, and so we're looking at potentially, you know, turning that into parking, you know, depending on what's needed to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, anything else?
I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I'll open the meeting up for a public comment if there is any. Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the Commissioners for any discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
That the Planning Commission forward an approval of City Council for the requested amendment to the zoning map designation of the properties located at sixty-four forty-six South, nine hundred East from R-one-eight, low-density, single-family, to R and B residential neighborhood business as described in the staff report.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Hacker, that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the requested amendment to the zoning map designation of the properties located at six four four six South, nine hundred East, from R-one-eight, low-density, single-family, to R and B residential neighborhood business as described in the staff report. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, I have a second from Commissioner Horstow. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, David, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Horstow?
Yes.
Commissioner Hildreth?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kling?
Yes.
Chair Richards?
Yes. Not too bad, huh? It was pretty easy. Congratulations, the motion is passed. And that is it for tonight, from our, for our agenda items. Any announcements or questions?
We will have a Planning Commission on the eighteenth, very, application-wise, very small, but we're planning on having our yearly Open and Public Meetings Act training, and probably some land use training where you guys can ask us any questions that you've kind of experienced over, you know, the few months that our newbies have been here, and then also obviously some of our more seasoned Planning Commissioners, if they have questions. Looking at you, Ned, lots of questions, right? No. So yeah, we're looking forward to it, should be a pretty fun night, so any questions I, I'm happy to answer.
Okay. Okay, thank you.